Well, good morning. Before we call this hearing to order, I've asked Ralph Abraham to open us with a prayer.
Let's pray. Our Father, we certainly appreciate your presence in this committee meeting. We pray for your wisdom, your discernment, your understanding, your knowledge, everything that we lack. Go with us through this day. Guide us, direct us, lead us. Have us do the best thing for you. We pray these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Ralph. The hearing on the Committee of Agriculture entitled "Clearing the Next Crisis: Resilience, Recovery, and Resolution of Derivative Clearing Houses" will come to order. Thank everyone for being here this morning. Before I get to my statement, I'd like to acknowledge that Commissioner Sharon Bowen has announced her intent to resign from the CSDT last week. I personally want to thank her for the great work she did sharing the Market Risk Advisory Committee. She's had some eight hearings over the last couple of years. And she's, as a part of her announcement, called for a full committee, all five, Commission, all five, and I certainly second her, her call for that, that issue. Ms. Bowen has been a consistent voice, reminding the Commission that markets exist to serve people, and I want to thank her for her service and, and wish her well in whatever her next challenge is. We would have also had a panel today with somebody from the CFTC on the panel. Chris Giancarlo is over at the Senate today, and so just physically, mechanically, we couldn't make that welcome. And probably the most important thing we'll announce the entire day is today is David Scott's birthday. Happy birthday, David Scott.
Well, thank you.
He's sweet sixteen and never been kissed. All right. Well, good morning, and thank you for being here today. Today's hearing builds on the important work done by the CEH, by the Subcommittee chaired by Austin Scott and Ranking Member David Scott. I want to thank them for their work of examining how well our regulators responded to the financial crisis. While those hearings were focused on past performance, today's hearing examines the possibility, and again, just the possibility, for a future financial crisis and how our cleared markets may respond. Failure of a major clearinghouse would be an unprecedented event. Such an event would mean that there'd be a cataclysmic breakdown of the interlocking risk management schemes despite their highly regulated system to prevent its collapse. While this probability is remote, and I repeat, remote, recent history demonstrates that the words impossible and implausible do not necessarily mean impossible. To be clear, I don't know if, if, or when another financial crisis might hit. What I do know is that markets are comprised of millions of people interacting and responding to incentives, regulated by thousands of able civil servants applying the best knowledge they can, overseen by hundreds of lawmakers trying to recognize and prioritize the trade-offs in regulatory goals. There are many smart but fallible people involved in our markets, offering numerous opportunities for mistakes. That is why we've gathered here today to discuss what happens when the best-laid plans of men go awry. Today's hearing is reported for two reasons. First, to provide this committee with an understanding of the work that has been done to prepare for and prevent a crisis. And second, to consider how we want regulators to respond in the unlikely, unplausible event of a failure. Recovery from a default is not an automatic process. While substantial planning has gone into preparing for a crisis, there are wider factors outside a clearinghouse's control that might impact the recovery process. Things like the availability of liquidity, the impact of regulations like the supplemental leverage ratio, and even the stability of the broader economy will all impact the implementation of recovery plans. Finally, if a clearinghouse cannot be recovered, Congress needs to identify the ultimate goal of any government intervention. Today Dodd-Frank Act, Dodd-Frank generally assigns the FDIC the power to resolve failed, systemically important institutions, but is largely silent on clearinghouses. We must fully consider what the resolution process might look like and understand its impact on broader financial markets before putting it to use. We should consider as clearly as we can the expectations of our regulators and the potential consequences of the limits of their actions. Absent a plan, I fear regulators will respond to a crisis with the only tool in their arsenal, and that would be a bazooka of money. Thank you for our witnesses coming in today. We have a panel of, with deep knowledge of the derivatives industry, who've spent a career wrestling with these challenges, challenging issues, and we certainly appreciate your willingness to share your views with us today. With that, I'll turn to Mr. Peterson for his opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm pleased to welcome today's witnesses to the Ag Committee. It's been a while since we've reviewed these issues, and I look forward to hearing your testimony. Central clearing is the backbone of the futures industry. When we wrote Title VII of the Dodd-Frank bill, we anticipated that clearing could also become a central component of the swaps industry. Now, nearly ten years after the financial crisis, that change is taking place. I think we can all agree that making our markets safer is a good thing. Today, we will discuss current policies that are in place to manage a future crisis and how the clearinghouses are prepared if we find ourselves in a crisis situation again. I think it's important to note that the issues we will discuss today would only happen under extreme circumstances, and this is why the reviewing these issues now rather than the midst of a financial collapse is important. Again, I look forward to hearing today's witnesses and thank the Chair and yield back.
Thank you, gentlemen. Chair requested other members submit their opening statements for the record so that our witnesses may begin their testimony and to ensure there's ample time for questions. And I'd like to welcome our witnesses today. We have Mr. Robert Stegerwald, who's the Senior Policy Advisor, Financial Markets Group, Federal Reserve Bank in Chicago. Robert, was I close on your last name?
There you go.
All right. Scott Hill is the Chief Financial Officer of Intercontinental Exchange in Atlanta. Mr. Gerald Salzman of Council, Scadden, ARP, Slate, Mager, and Flom, Chicago, Illinois, on behalf of CME. And please pass on our best wishes to Terry's quick recovery. Otherwise, he would have been in that seat. Mr. John Dabs, the Global Head of Prime Derivatives, Credit Suisse here in Washington, DC. And Mr. Amas Garretti, Special Advisor on QED Investors, Former Assistant Secretary of Financial Institutions, U.S. Treasury Department, Washington, DC. With that, Robert, you're regressed for five minutes.
Chairman Conway, Ranking Member Peterson, and members of the committee, I very much appreciate the opportunity to testify today concerning some important public policy issues relating to central counterparty clearing. Specifically, I will explain why I support the provision of central bank account services and, if necessary, emergency liquidity support, not solvency support, to clearinghouses. Before I go further, it's incumbent upon me to tell you that my remarks today are solely my own and not those of the Federal Reserve Bank of Chicago, the Board of Governors, or any other person. I will briefly discuss the role that central banks have traditionally played, both as depositories and as liquidity providers, and make some observations regarding what I and my colleagues at the Chicago Fed have come to call time-critical liquidity. I'll explain that in just a moment. Since I believe that clearinghouses are uniquely dependent on the immediate availability of liquidity in circumstances where private sector liquidity arrangements may prove to be inadequate, I believe that it is crucial for central banks to be prepared to provide emergency liquidity assistance in such circumstances. Central banks have long provided accounts used to settle bank-to-bank obligations, and in this respect, they play a prominent role in large value payment systems around the world. Central banks also play a critical role in the modern financial system as providers of liquidity. In particular, central banks commonly play the role known as lender of last resort. This function involves the provision of emergency liquidity assistance to solvent but illiquid institutions. These functions are not new, but the environment in which central banks provide both account services and liquidity has changed profoundly in the past several decades. Modern financial systems are critically dependent on large-scale flows of intraday liquidity in payment, clearing, and settlement systems, this concept of time-critical liquidity that I referenced. Time-critical liquidity reflects the transformation of credit risk to liquidity risk. This is a positive trade-off. We compress credit risk, we manage it appropriately, but because of the tight interdependence associated with transfers of collateral, settlement payments, variation margin payments, which the other speakers will also address, this conversion of credit risk to liquidity risk means that we must have appropriate institutions available to provide liquidity as needed on an immediate basis. This is, in effect, the reflection of the increasing interconnectedness of our financial system, which the chairman made reference to in his opening remarks. Central counterparty clearinghouses, or CCPs, are particularly vulnerable to liquidity risk in connection with the daily and sometimes intraday exchange of settlements on a mark-to-market basis. This process may be impaired in unusual, extreme market conditions, such as the failure of one or more large clearing members of a CCP. The liquidity stresses that a CCP may experience in connection with these transfers does, do not necessarily imply that the CCP is insolvent or is likely to become insolvent. CCPs, unlike banks, have extraordinary recovery powers to deal with such circumstances. However, private sector liquidity arrangements on which the CCPs rely may become unreliable precisely in those circumstances where immediate provision of liquidity is necessary. As a result, I believe that central banks can provide a useful and effective backstop to the private sector system. If the financial resources on which the CCPs rely are also held in custody at the central bank, in central bank accounts, as I believe should be allowed, I believe that will facilitate the immediate provision of liquidity under those circumstances where it may be necessary. With that, I'll end my remarks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hill.
Chairman Conway and Ranking Member Peterson, I'm Scott Hill, Chief Financial Officer of Intercontinental Exchange, and I appreciate the opportunity to appear before the committee today to discuss the important role of clearing. Since launching an electronic over-the-counter energy marketplace in 2000 in Atlanta, Georgia, ICE has expanded both in the U.S. and internationally. Over the past seventeen years, we have acquired or built derivatives exchanges and clearinghouses in the U.S., Europe, Singapore, and Canada. ICE has a successful and innovative history clearing exchange-traded and over-the-counter, or OTC, derivatives across a spectrum of asset classes, including many energy, agricultural, and financial products. We began operating our first clearinghouse a decade ago, and today we are the third-largest global clearing operator with six clearinghouses in operation around the world. The risk-reducing benefits of central clearing have long been recognized by users of exchange-traded derivatives. The efficacy of the clearing model throughout even the most challenging financial situations made it the natural foundation of the global financial reforms put forward over the past decade for OTC derivatives. Clearing has consistently proven to be a fundamentally safe and sound process for managing systemic risk. Global regulators recognize that a clearinghouse, by acting as a central counterparty to transactions, minimizes bilateral risk. As a result of increased clearing, market participants are realizing that moving uncleared positions into clearing creates both operational and capital efficiencies. Over the past decade, ICE has invested heavily in our clearinghouse technology and risk management practices. ICE has kept pace with and often preceded regulatory reforms, new global rules, and international standards that have been established with respect to risk controls, levels of protection, and proper functioning of clearinghouses. We have worked closely with regulators, clearing members, and end-users to implement clearing models that meet or exceed modern regulatory reforms and international standards. Our clearinghouses are subject to extensive regulatory oversight and strong corporate governance requirements, exercised largely through risk and advisory committees and independent boards of directors. The committees include representatives from our clearing member firms and, in some cases, clients. ICE clearinghouses regularly conduct margin-backed testing, default fund stress testing, and liquidity stress testing, the results of which are publicly available and reviewed by clearing members and regulators. The rules, practices, and procedures of ICE's clearinghouses are fully transparent and publicly disclosed in a consistent manner. ICE clearinghouses have also established robust recovery plans that are clear and transparent and provide sufficient detail for members and regulators to anticipate the likely actions and tools that may be used during a default. ICE has been working with regulators and clearing members to implement changes to its recovery rules to further enhance the recovery process and incentivize clearing members, clearinghouses, and market participants to work together during a crisis situation to maintain the viability of a market. ICE's clearinghouses manage a significant amount of collateral, largely in the form of cash and U.S. government securities. The management of these large collateral balances and the need to facilitate daily variation margining requires the mitigation of custodial and depository risk and collateral liquidity risk. While clearinghouses have successfully managed these risks in the past through commercial arrangements, such arrangements are frequently with institutions that are also large clearing members. Central banks, including the Federal Reserve, can eliminate custodial and depository risk by allowing clearinghouses to access to deposit U.S. dollars in a Federal Reserve system account and eliminate any liquidity risk by granting clearinghouses access to the discount window for the limited purpose of transforming U.S. Treasuries into U.S. dollars. It's important to note that such access creates no additional risk to the taxpayer. Ironically, despite the growth in the volume of cleared contracts, the number of futures commission merchants, or FCMs, available to provide clearing services for end-users has dropped from nearly 200 to fewer than 60 in recent years. Unfortunately, the term offboarding of end-users has become more prevalent in the industry than onboarding. One of the biggest contributors to this troubling trend is the proposed requirements under Basel III. Basel III requires a bank to hold regulatory capital against clearing customer margin on its balance sheet, notwithstanding the fact that the customer margin is posted to a clearinghouse and segregated at that clearinghouse. Said differently, risk-reducing margins collected from customers and segregated on banks' balance sheets are considered risk-increasing for capital requirement purposes. In addition, these increased capital costs may impede customer reporting from a failing clearing firm to a healthy clearing firm in a time of stress. Under current rules, FCMs accepting new customer positions from a defaulted FCM must immediately be willing and able to sustain large capital charges to absorb these new positions. These rules introduce a substantial impediment and disincentive for FCMs to take positions from a defaulting clearing member's books. Thank you for the opportunity to share our views with you. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the members of the Subcommittee.
Ms. Salzman, five minutes.
Chairman Conway, Ranking Member Peterson, members of the committee, I'm Jerry Salzman. I'm testifying on behalf of the Chicago Mercantile Exchange. Mr. Duffy's been unable to get here today, but can't fly. Most of what I was going to say has already been said by Mr. Hill and Mr. Stegerwald, and I agree with him. So I'm going to try and sort of change up on the fly and get a little more basic than, than what's been said here, which is pretty high-level, especially if you're not really into how clearing works, what it is, and why it protects the country. So a clearinghouse actually isn't a risk-taking enterprise. People bring contracts to the clearinghouse, and the clearinghouse steps between the buyer and the seller. It collects from those who lose, and it pays to those who win. It manages a matchbook, is what we call it, because so long as the people who are losing pay, the winners get paid, and the system works, and the country works, and the whole markets work. And we ensure that even if somebody fails, there still isn't going to be risk to the system. And we apply, we apply the following types of devices. If you're going to be a member of a clearinghouse, a clearing member, we make you contribute to a guarantee fund, and your contribution to the guarantee fund is based on how much risk you bring to the clearinghouse. So in addition to your contribution to the guarantee fund, we say not only that, but if you're going to put on a position, we're going to figure out how much can be lost on that position during the time it takes us to liquidate that position or recreate the matched book. And we say, in addition to what you pay to the guarantee fund, we want you to put up that money for your position and your customers' positions. And we collect that money, and we hold it at the clearinghouse. And one of the things Mr. Stegerwald was saying is, the safest place to hold that money is not at a bank, where we usually keep it, but at the Federal Reserve, because we know the Federal Reserve isn't going to fail, and that takes one piece of risk out of the system. In addition to those things, the clearinghouse next says, every day, sometimes twice a day, we're going to watch how the market moves. And as the market moves, we're going to ask you, if you're losing money that day on your positions, pay the money in immediately, or the next morning. If you're gaining money, we're going to pay you, so that there's no debt built up in this system. This is how clearinghouses work. This is how the safety of the system is preserved. Now, in addition to the money flows, which are tremendously important, obviously, to keep debt out of the system, the clearinghouse does compliance reviews of all of its members on a regular basis. First of all, we have electronic systems to make sure that all the customer money is exactly where it's supposed to be, and we can get that on a daily basis. In addition, we do risk-based compliance reviews to make sure the finances of the clearing members continue to be solid, because one of the things we make sure is you don't get to be a clearing member unless you have the resources to make good on your obligations to the clearinghouse. And we're doing this on a regular basis, and the CFTC is overseeing all of our work in these areas. So essentially, we're running a system where we have matchbooks, and we have money to back anything up. If somebody fails to make a deposit when they're supposed to, or if somebody's financial condition is known to be too weak to continue as a member of the clearinghouse, we can declare them in default, even though there's been no loss. When we declare them in default, now we have all these resources we were talking about to cover their positions, to make it possible for us to liquidate their positions, and to reestablish a matchbook. The disaster you're concerned with is the situation where two, at least two major U.S. or international banks that are members of our clearinghouse fail simultaneously, where the whole world is more or less falling apart. And we have set up our money flows to cover exactly that situation. In fact, we're good for four banks failing simultaneously, big banks. This means that the protections not only include what we've collected, what we're managing every day, but what the banking system is doing to protect the banks from failing and to make sure that if they do fail, they fail in an orderly fashion. So as I've said, I haven't gone over, my, my actual speech didn't involve anything I've just said to you now, but involved what's been said by the others. I hope this has been useful to you, and I will be here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dabs.
Chairman Conway, Ranking Member Peterson, and members of the committee, thank you for holding this important hearing today and for the opportunity to present our views. My name is John Dabs, and I'm the Global Head of Prime Derivative Services, which includes listed derivatives and cleared swaps at Credit Suisse. We appreciate the committee's leadership in holding the hearing, this hearing, to examine the role that various market participants play in facilitating swaps clearing. Today, I will focus my comments on two key areas: improving resiliency at CCPs and improving end-user access. Credit Suisse believes that the initiative to increase clearing has been successful and that it has met many of the goals set out by the G20 in 2009, including improved transparency in financial markets, mitigation of systemic risk, and protection against certain market abuses. Since 2009, market participants have moved from being skeptical of clearing to embracing clearing as evidenced by the new pipeline, by the pipeline of new products moving away from bilateral markets and into CCPs. It's worth noting that many of these products are not mandated for clearing, but are, but rather are being cleared on a voluntary basis. For our part, Credit Suisse is an industry leader in providing clearing access to clients, including many U.S. pensions, energy, agricultural producers, and insurers who look to the cleared swaps market to hedge a wide variety of risks that they encounter in their normal course of day-to-day business. I lead a team that, amongst other things, serves as intermediary between the client and clearinghouse. Credit Suisse's ability to serve as intermediary, AKA the clearing member, is a vital part of the clearing ecosystem, as it not only is cost prohibitive to clients, but simply many clients can't meet membership requirements. In addition to providing important access to, for clients to clear at CCPs, clearing members like Credit Suisse also significantly contribute to the safety and soundness of CCPs. For each client, for each cleared swap that we facilitate on behalf of a client, we guarantee the client's financial obligation to the CCP, i.e., we make the CCP whole in the event that the client might fail to meet its obligations under a swap transaction. We also provide default fund contributions to the CCP in an amount that is proportionate to the risk our client's portfolio adds to the CCP. Lastly, clearing members also provide an array of services to clients, such as setting margin levels, monitoring risk, and providing operational efficiencies. Given our experience as one of the largest, one of the market's largest clearing members, we have seen firsthand the benefits of the evolution of cleared swaps markets. Conversely, we have also seen where cleared swap markets could be enhanced. We believe that small tweaks to the current regime could allow for broader access and even greater resiliency to cleared markets. We believe that regulation should create a safeguard package that requires all CCP, not just significantly, not just significant ones, to have enough resources to meet the cover-two standard, i.e., maintain a safety net large enough to absorb losses in the event that, that a CCP's largest two members were to default. Further, all CCPs, not just systemically important ones, should have access to the, to the Fed for deposits. Sidcos should have, Sidcos or systemically important DCOs should also have access to the Fed to borrow on a secured basis for converting U.S. sovereign debt into cash during a time of stress. Together, these measures would greatly reduce the interconnectedness of CCPs and reduce the additional pressures placed upon banks during a time of stress. We also believe that CCPs should have skin in the game. They should contribute capital, either equity, debt, or insurance, that would act as a line of defense for losses incurred in a clearing member default. There should be minimum standards that scale as clearinghouses and its risk profile grows or shrinks. We believe scaling the skin in the game to the largest clearing We believe scaling the skin in the game to the largest clearing member's default contribution creates the right incentive for the CCP to diversify risk. Additionally, there should be incentives to ensure that clearing members stay in the CCP during a recovery or resolution scenario. I would argue that the current incentive is to exit as quickly as possible if members believe resolution is imminent. In time of stress, clearing members like Credit Suisse have little to no upside to stay at the CCP. There's only significant downside risk, as default fund payments, assessments, and variation margin gains haircutting don't have to be paid back to the clearing members who stick around to aid in the default waterfall. We believe clearing members should be repaid for saving the clearinghouse, either by compensation for future earnings or by equity. And one last point on resiliency. Resiliency would improve if CCPs had mechanisms for clients to continue to perform on their positions carried by a defaulting clearing member. Allowing clients to directly guarantee their trades for a short period of time would greatly reduce the risk in the system and allow regulators and bankruptcy trustees to quickly identify the good-paying clients from the bad defaulting clients. Currently, all clients look the same at the time of an FCM insolvency, because all clients stop paying variation margin. In addition to increasing resiliency, we also focus on how to ensure broad access to cleared derivatives markets, especially for hedgers. To this point, I would like to highlight for the committee two adverse consequences of Basel III and Dodd-Frank. First, under Dodd-Frank, we have CCAR stresses. Current CCAR regulations require banks to run stress tests on client portfolios, which we did well before CCAR required us to. However, current standards don't take into account the creditworthiness of a client. In fact, CCAR has the adverse effect of making our most creditworthy clients look like clients like investment and money managers, corporates, insurance companies, and public pensions, look as if they're the most risky clients. The reality of this is that clearing intermediaries, like Credit Suisse, either have to hold significant capital or reduce our business with these institutions. Unfortunately, we've had to do both. Second, the supplementary leverage ratio, or SLR, applies an overly burdensome capital charge on client-clearing members. SLR treats the risk of client transactions guaranteed by clearing members where margin is collected, segregated, and posted to the CCP, the same as that of a bilateral swap, where a bank acts as principal and doesn't segregate or post any collected margin to a CCP. To this point, we endorse the Treasury's recommendation to allow margin to reduce the clearing members' exposure of client-clear transactions. Without changes to the SLR, clearing intermediaries will continue to have a group of low-capital returning clients, who are typically hedgers, such as pensions. The return on capital is unsustainable at the current levels. In closing, we reiterate that the current clearing model is not broken. In fact, it's functioned quite well during the financial crisis, and it's continued to grow. As clearing continues to expand and evolve, all market participants and regulators should continue to collaborate to achieve the objective of improving end-user access and CCP resiliency, and therefore decreasing the probability of recovery and resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Garrity.
Thank you, Chairman Conway, Ranking Member Peterson, and the members of this committee. It's a great opportunity for me to be here today and to share my perspective on the critical issue of central counterparties' resilience and resolution. Before I begin, I would like to emphasize that the views I express today are my own and are not those of QED Investors or its partners. Let me start with a clear statement. Dodd-Frank made derivatives markets safer and more stable. These reforms made our economy stronger, not only because they will help prevent future financial crises, but also because the stability and safety of the U.S. financial markets is a significant competitive advantage for the U.S. as a global economic power. In the lead-up to the crisis, the derivatives markets were characterized by complex webs of transactions with limited or no credit protection against billions of dollars of daily market movement, woefully inadequate documentation in back-office systems. There was simply no way to make sense of who owed what to whom in extreme market scenarios. In the course of the crisis, then, it should be no surprise that not only were derivatives transactions central to the failure of AIG and Bear Stearns, but they were the very instruments marbled through some of the most toxic securities, such as CDOs, CDO squared, and synthetic CDOs that unraveled in the mortgage meltdown. And in the height of the crisis, as Lehman Brothers failed, uncertainty about the value and holders of their risk transacted in derivatives markets acted as the single strongest accelerant of financial uncertainty, panic, and contagion. So what, then, did the Dodd-Frank reforms accomplish? Most importantly and most directly, Dodd-Frank gave the CFTC and the SEC explicit, comprehensive authority to oversee their respective derivatives markets according to the same standards that we uphold for other financial markets. Next, Dodd-Frank required pre- and post-trade transparency for all derivatives transactions, capital and margin rules for all dealers and derivatives, and mandated that standardized derivatives be centrally cleared. Dodd-Frank has changed the way derivatives markets operate for the better, making for deeper, more liquid markets with simpler products and lower risk, and in doing so, reduced food, energy, and other costs for farms, businesses, and families across the country. Lastly, and the topic of today's hearing, Dodd-Frank extended existing frameworks for the oversight of central counterparties. Central counterparties are designed to centralize documentation, reconciliation, risk management, and margin for all their members. This means that well-managed and well-regulated central counterparties do not just centralize the risk of derivative markets and increase transparency to regulators, they actually transform and reduce that risk. Therefore, policymakers' focus on resilience and resolution of central counterparties in today's hearing should be understood as part of a responsible approach to risk management. First, diagnose the risks, then put in place controls to mitigate, then reassess the remaining risk. The regulator's current focus on the potential failure of central counterparties is part of an iterative process of assessing the risk after effective reforms. When considering the policy priorities ahead, the first obligation must be to preserve the gains to stability and safety that we have made since the financial crisis. And most importantly for this context, this means preserving Title II of Dodd-Frank and the orderly liquidation authority. Removing this authority would be deeply irresponsible for taxpayers, explicitly returning to the policy framework that gave birth to the TARP program. It would suggest that policymakers had forgotten the immense pain and suffering of families all across this country faced in the crisis and its aftermath. And most importantly, the stated rationale, which is to achieve budget savings, are a mirage. Those savings appear simply as an accounting quirk. By law, taxpayers cannot bear losses for any entity liquidated by the FDIC as part of the orderly liquidation authority. In today's hearing, I look forward to discussing both potential scenarios for the failure of a central counterparty, and it is worth emphasizing both member-default-related and non-member default-related operational failures. I also look forward to offering my perspective on three continuing challenges for policymakers. First, coordination across multiple central counterparties. Second, cross-border cooperation, where the U.S. government has quietly had significant successes since the crisis. And the need to develop strategies that create ex-ante incentives for positive risk management and for recovery before we get to resolution. There, much work remains to be done. But while we do not yet have complete strategies and tools to handle the resolution of a critically important central counterparty, the only way to avoid catastrophic outcomes in that event will be to build those tools on the foundational authorities created by Dodd-Frank. Thank you, and I look forward to answering questions today.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, and I appreciate your testimony this morning. The chair would remind members that they will be recognized for questioning in order of seniority for members who were here at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized in order of arrival, and I appreciate my colleagues' understanding. And with that, I recognize myself for five minutes. Well, thank you for presenting this. I understand it's unsettling, perhaps, to talk about failure of a clearinghouse and all those kind of things, but if we don't talk about it and have some reasonable understanding of it, then we, as policymakers, will have a difficult time making sure we've got the policies in place. All of you've talked about the extensive protections and counterbalances and all the things that are in place right now for the risks that we know about. I think it's what we're trying to explore this morning, are the risks that we don't know about or the ones we don't think could happen. I'm old enough to be around in 1987, when the stock market dropped 22% one day, which was a bit unsettling. All of us were around in '06, '07, '08, when the housing market property values collapsed across the country. No one necessarily thought that was the case. So looking at two sides to this question, one, what are all those kind of things that would cause monster liquidity risks in the system that would, where two banks failed or more than several banks failed? In that scenario, what would we do and how would we handle it? Could the market do it? And then, the resolution side, that if you had that, what happens then to the clearinghouse, those customers, everything else? So looking at the broader side of it, from the liquidity standpoint, is there a plausible or just stunningly remote scenario that would create that kind of liquidity risk, where the largest banks out there couldn't make their interday transfers, and that we would have a circumstance that would cause the Secretary of the Treasury to be as white as my shirt and try to explain to us in '08 what was about to happen in his mind with respect to the credit markets at that point in time? So anybody want to jump in and just tell us what, is it just, are we unreasonably asking that question?
I can try, Jerry Solzmann. Essentially, we are running tests on a regular basis internationally and nationally, looking at scenarios that are far out but still plausible, given current market conditions, to create a risk or liquidity risk big enough to bring down a clearinghouse. So far, we have all been passing all of the tests, but obviously, it's possible that something could happen. For example, one of the things the CME does is to have a standby liquidity facility from the major banks. The problem in the world is, there's been tremendous concentration among the banks that are still out there, the banks that are the major banks, where the money's held, who the clearing members are. And although we have a liquidity facility in place, and we have tons of treasuries to give to the banks to convert to immediate cash, the question is, if banks are failing at the same time we're going to the banks to get cash, now we just have treasuries. We have plans to settle in treasuries instead of cash if we had to, but that is not particularly a good way to do things. The best way to do things, from our point of view, is what Mr. Steigerwal has said and what Governor Powell has said, and to make the access to the Fed window to borrow on treasuries more expeditious than it currently is under law.
So let's flush that out, because one of the criticisms about is that somehow if doing that, the taxpayers would be on the hook for some sort of "bailout," to use a horrible phrase. So the credit risk to the Fed for a clearinghouse swapping treasuries for cash is what?
Is zero. They're ahead 2% the second we give them the treasuries.
That's assuming the federal taxpayer continues to make good on their debt.
That's assuming that the federal taxpayer and the federal government continues to make good on their debt. Yes, sir.
All right. So I think one of you, Mr. Hill, mentioned that the access to that window could be, in statute or policy, limited to that transaction only. In other words, the only thing the Fed could land on the window would be against U.S. treasuries.
That's exactly what I propose. I think it's for that very direct and limited purpose. I completely agree with Mr. Solzmann. In that scenario, we would even suggest if the Fed felt it was necessary, that they could put a larger haircut on those when we show up at the window. But it is only for the U.S. treasuries to turn them into U.S. dollars to facilitate liquidity.
And quickly, the risks to the taxpayer for allowing clearinghouses to park their excess collateral and assets at the Fed is what?
I see no additional risk that goes beyond the ordinary incidences of acting as a depository, performing account services and functions that the Fed performs each and every day, day in and day out. I would add very quickly that the sort of liquidity support that I have spoken to would be extremely short-term in nature. These institutions could not survive without immediate liquidity provision and will not survive by being dependent on resources provided from outside of the clearing community.
All right. About time, Mr. Peterson, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been saying for years that the Maslow Committee's supplemental leverage ratio counts for initial and variation margins gets it wrong. Late last week, Federal Reserve Board Governor Jerome Powell suggested the SLR should be changed. In his last speech before he retired, Daniel Turullo, another Fed Board Governor in charge of market regulation, suggested the same. So Mr. Steigerwal, for those who don't know, could you please describe the problem and tell us how regulators could go about fixing this? And Mr. Dobbs, how, as a clearing member, you see this issue? Mr. Steigerwal first.
Thank you, Ranking Member Peterson. This, as you undoubtedly are aware, is a very complicated topic. The application of the capital rules, MSA, causes my head to spin when I try to think about it in its comprehensive nature. Let me say that there are implications, both to the ordinary ability of financial institutions that are subject to the supplementary leverage ratio in providing access to clearing. The mandate to centrally clear standardized derivatives frankly doesn't mean very much if the end user can't get there. That has to be a concern. More importantly, from my perspective, in an emergency circumstance where a clearing member has failed, it is essential for customer accounts to be smoothly, swiftly, and safely transferred to a solvent operating clearing member. My understanding from the analyses I have seen suggests that that process could be, almost certainly would be, impaired by the existing form of the SLR.
So how do we fix it?
I'll grab that one. So from an SLR perspective, just to real quickly describe what SLR does. It was intended, on the derivative side, it was intended to make visible the non-balance sheet items of a bank, because traditionally, we'd measure leverage just by looking at the balance sheet of a bank, and it added an ability to recognize derivatives that are not on the balance sheet. And we're okay with that as a concept. Where we think we got it wrong is, in the case of derivatives that are cleared for clients, we recognize the risk of the instrument. However, we don't recognize the value of that deposit that the client has provided. So if the risk of the instrument is $5, and you give me $3, then clearly, 5 minus 3 is 2, and we have $2 of risk that we should cover and should be on our balance sheet, and we're okay with that. Currently, we take the $5, we ignore the fact that we've collected margin from that, and simply put $5 on our balance sheet. And if I step back and just look at where your capital regulations and your legislation have kind of divided, is when we made the mandate to centrally clear, we took one transaction that historically had been done between a bank and a client, and we split that up into two transactions, each transaction facing a clearinghouse. So we have two transactions, one where a bank faces the clearinghouse, and a second one where a clearinghouse, a clearing member, which is typically a bank, and a client. So now you've taken the universe and you've effectively doubled leverage as we measure it today. So we didn't do anything. We, in fact, made the market safer, but as measured under our capital regime, we've actually taken one unit of leverage and made it into two units of leverage. So when we look at the system, it actually appears that the leverage has doubled in the system. So we think the effective policy would be to use the initial margin that a client has provided us as a deduction from the risk of the instrument that the client has put on in their account.
Thank you. There's, it appears from the review of the material that one of the weak spots in the system is the repo market. Could somebody describe the role of the repo market and what the concerns are out there in regards to how this might undermine the system? Jerry?
Well, I'll try. The repo market is used by people who have securities who need cash, and generally, it's an overnight market, and the liquidity in that market has been very high, so that if you had securities, generally, you could get cash, but often the next day. Frequently, for clearinghouses, they need the cash immediately, because all their payments are made at set times. In the past, we've been able to make arrangements with people to get paid the same day, the same day we give up our securities, and so that functions wonderfully for us. But everybody, one of the things we're worried about, one of the things everybody has to worry about, is that in a time of crisis, the repo market will be one of the first things that break down. It did during Lehman Brothers' situation. They could not use their securities to get cash, and that would be a disaster, because everybody's sitting there, everything's solvent, everything should work, but the system breaks for one second, and then we're all in trouble that we shouldn't be in. So again, we fall back to the idea, we do have a central bank with essentially unlimited liquidity, and as long as we have really good securities to give it, we're not hurting the taxpayer, we're helping the taxpayer, because the cost of undoing a crisis is 10 times the cost of the potential losses of the crisis.
One thing I'd add, and I agree with everything that was said, is we have established for our clearinghouses committed repo facilities, so that at a time of crisis, we're able to access liquidity. I know that the CME has done the same thing. We have committed FX facilities. So we have taken steps in the commercial market to do what we can to manage, similar to the default stress test, we run liquidity stress tests that look at what happens if your two largest clearing members members go down in the middle of a liquidity event. You know, are you able to sufficiently provide the liquidity, Mr. Salzman notes, is necessary to keep the system functioning? I'll give you an example. In our clearinghouses, that stress could be up to as much as $4 billion in the middle of the day. And so we have provided backstops against that, but I think it's important to realize that those backstops are with large financial institutions that in many cases are the large clearing members. And so you've got effectively a potential wrong-way risk in that your committed backstop may be from a firm that is also subject to the risk of default. And that's where I think that the Fed can step in and provide the services that Mr. Stigewold talked about. Again, not as the primary defense. We, as CCPs, have primary defenses, but as a last step to ensure the liquidity continues to flow in the system.
Congressman, time has expired. Mr. Austin Scott, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hill, sorry to keep coming back to you, but you represent ICE, and one ICE clearinghouse is designated as systemically important and another one is not. Does it make sense that we treat systemically important clearinghouses differently from other clearinghouses? And how does this impact you, representing both?
Thank you for the question. It doesn't make sense, is the short answer, to treat one clearinghouse differently than another. And I'll give you a specific example. So ICE Clear Credit is our CDS clearinghouse. It has been deemed systemically important. It does have access to put its cash at the Federal Reserve. It's a similar position that the CME is in. Our agriculture clearinghouse, ICE Clear U.S., was not deemed to be systemically important and does not have the access to deposit its cash at the Fed. The Fed today provides returns on cash that are above what the market pays, and we have seen cash leave ICE Clear U.S. and go to other clearinghouses where that money will be put on deposit at the Fed and earn a higher return. And I think that's an unintended consequence, where you have a wheat farmer whose cash is lodged at the Fed at the end of the day, and a cotton farmer whose cash is lodged at a commercial market earning a lower return. And to be clear, it's not about the return. The fact that the Fed pays an above-market return is not particularly logical to me as it is. It's really about the security of those deposits, not the return on them. What we're looking for is the ability for each of our customers to have the same access to the secure deposit services that are available to systemically important institutions.
And so, prior to Dodd-Frank, the clearing community was required to find its own solutions to the clearinghouse solvency question. All of you have testified, and this is unusual, that all would testify that the same solution would work. Each of you endorsed the Federal Reserve account as an important place to hold the cash reserves of the clearinghouses. Those accounts are currently provided by Title VIII of the Dodd-Frank Act for systemically important clearinghouses. Some of your clearinghouses are, some aren't. There's discussion about repealing Title VIII without addressing the individual, all the individual things in Title VIII that it covers, and whether or not repeal is appropriate in all cases. Just a few questions about the Federal Reserve account services. Mr. Hill, again, where will clearinghouses put their financial reserves if they lose access to those account services at the Federal Reserve?
So, to be, thank you again for the question, Congressman Scott. To be clear, the clearinghouses have existed a long time and have been able to facilitate places to put their cash and to generate the liquidity necessary, but before the systemically important designation and to the extent that that is removed, we will be able to continue to provide, find those commercial services. So I think, direct answer to your question, if ICE Clear Credit no longer was able to deposit its cash at the Fed, we would create relationships with other commercial institutions, other financial institutions, that would be able to take those deposits. And again, those are the same relationships we have today for ICE Clear U.S. They're the same relationships that we have for our large London clearinghouse, ICE Clear Europe. So we know that those facilities are available and able to be implemented. I simply am suggesting that access to the Fed makes the system more secure. And therefore, whether Dodd-Frank or Title VIII are repealed or not, I think a rational policy decision would be to provide that access.
Mr. Stigewold, what problems are there with market-based solutions to managing clearinghouse cash collateral in a crisis?
Congressman, I think the answer to that question is that in the midst of the sort of crisis that would cause a central counterparty clearinghouse to turn to its resources, the financial system as a whole would be stressed. We would see a generalized phenomenon known as hoarding of liquidity, akin to a bank run. We saw this clearly during the crisis, and we can expect that private sector transactions will slow, if not cease. We were pleased to have Governor Powell speak at an event at the Chicago Fed on Friday, where he went into some detail about the events relating to the 20th of October 1987, which showed in fact the kind of gridlock in the payment system and in the exchange of these critical settlement payments that we are concerned with. That's why I think the public sector as a backstop and as a custodian of these critical resources makes a lot of sense.
Mr. Chairman, my time has expired. Your time has expired. David Scott, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to ask several questions here, and let me just commend the panel on the expertness and that you all are dealing with what is a very complex and complicated system. Well, I want to, first of all, Mr. Hill, address this question to you. We recently saw that the EU proposed additional standards for clearinghouse regulation, and I believe that this will tie into the Brexit determination. And I want to ask your opinion on whether or not these proposed standards threaten the equivalence determination that we negotiated for, we fought for, for so long, and how do you view this from the perspective of cross-border competition and cooperation?
Thank you, Congressman Scott, for that. It's a really important question, and happy birthday. I would tell you, so for the committee's benefit, if you haven't seen it, what the European Commission has done is published a paper that has effectively looked at how they will regulate clearinghouses that aren't on the European continent, but in their opinion may create some form of systemic risk, particularly around euro-denominated products. And they define two tiers of clearinghouses. Tier one is effectively not material, we're not going to worry about it, we'll defer to the home jurisdiction. Tier two is a very, very broad category, that can range from anything to, we'll work closely with the home regulator, to we will have, we, Europe will have direct oversight of a non-European CCP, to the very extreme of, we will not allow our European companies to use that CCP if they remain located outside of Europe. And so unfortunately, Congressman, there's still, that's a wide breadth of possibilities. I think it's difficult to say ultimately what it will mean, because effectively, they've left all the cards on the table. They have complete optionality on what they'll do. I don't know that it will be a threat to the equivalency that I agree with you, we worked long and hard to establish, and the CFTC particularly did a remarkable job working with our European colleagues to reach that agreement. So I can't say for certain that it will impact it, but it has the possibility to impact it if, for example, the European regulators decide that a U.S.-based clearinghouse, or in our case, a UK-based clearinghouse clears euro-denominated products in a sufficient amount that they deem to create risk. So it creates uncertainty without question.
Well, thank you, Ms. Hill. I want to ask, turn my attention to you, Mr. Salzman. In addition to my work here on the Agriculture Committee, I'm also a member of the Financial Services Committee. And we recently reported out a bill, controversial, that I felt had serious problems, and that's that Financial Choice Act, because it repeals both Title II, which provides for the orderly liquidation authority to wind down in a crisis, and then it also repeals Title VIII, which provides access to deposit in the Federal Reserve in the Dodd-Frank Act. How damaging is this? And could you share with us why it's important that if and as we move forward, that we keep these two sections in place?
Well, I'm going to be a bit more limited and less political if I can. The part of Title VIII that's definitely important to us, as everybody here has testified, is access to the Fed accounts and access to the Fed window. And to the extent that's preserved, I don't want to jump in and talk about essentially getting rid of the rest of Title VIII. With respect to Title II and the authority to wind down an exchange, a clearinghouse, I am deeply concerned that the determinations made by the European regulators on equivalence depended on the notion that there was a, an authority, resolution authority in the government. And I'm very concerned that getting rid of Title II will give somebody in Europe a further excuse to assert either more power or to deny us European clients. So I want to be really careful about that. With respect to the Choice Act itself, there's actually some very interesting things in the Choice Act in other parts. So, as I say, I don't want to be political on those issues, if I can avoid it.
Thank you, sir.
Congressman, time has expired. Mr. Comer, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With respect to liquidity risk, during the Brexit vote, we saw very significant margin calls from clearinghouses. What lesson should we draw from that experience in terms of liquidity management and risk management?
So I think you point to a very important illustration of exactly the principle that I was talking about. These markets, the clearinghouses that serve them, use time-critical settlement processes to contain credit risk. It's precisely because clearing members are called daily and sometimes intraday to make payments that extinguish obligations they have to the clearinghouse, that credit risk can be managed in an efficient and effective way. That means, however, that all participants in the system, and we have to think about clearing as a system, have to be ready, willing, and able to meet those time-critical obligations as they come due. On extraordinary days, the amounts involved can be quite exceptional. The Brexit vote and the aftermath demonstrates that. That's a part of the new world of interconnectedness.
I do want to say one thing about that. There wasn't a problem at every clearinghouse. There was no problem at CME's clearinghouse, and this is in part a matter of experience and a matter of judgment. And remember, clearinghouses have been in business for 100 years, and some of us have actually learned something during that period, including 1987, where our clearinghouse made a mistake and we made an extra call for intraday margin that actually caused a problem. This is not something you forget when you make a mistake, and I'm sure that the clearinghouses that did call for extra margin this time have learned a significant lesson, and at least that will be out of the system going forward.
Yeah, as a member that had to make a very large payment, I can tell you that each clearinghouse was unique in their response, and there was one clearinghouse that acted differently than what I would call the global standard. I think it's been remedied at this point. However, the challenge really was that the, it was a one-way collection. So instead of taking money from the loser and paying it to the winner, it was just a collection from all the losers without any of the winners benefiting. So you were effectively trapping liquidity at the very time that you wanted to provide liquidity back to the market. So they've since remedied it. It was, it was a combination of rules and general structure of their technology systems, but I think that it's, we've moved in the right direction. These are why those stress tests and things and real-life examples are always better and, you know, than just a test that we do behind the scenes. It's always good that we have results that improve.
The only thing that I'd add is two important things. Number one, the Brexit scenario created a lot of volatility, and I think the outcome was loosely saying, unexpected. And I think it demonstrates, the system does work, because the money did move. And I think it's also important to note that the one clearinghouse that was the exception was outside the U.S., and I think that reinforces the importance of the cross-border communications and regulations, because even though the clearinghouse was outside the U.S., a number of members weren't. So the system did work in this situation, and where the issue existed demonstrates why we have to have cross-border cooperation among regulators.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
Congressman yields back. Ms. Custer, five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Conaway, and Ranking Member Peterson for holding this hearing, and thank you to our panel. Nearly 10 years ago, the United States and the world experienced one of the most serious financial crises in our nation's history, which wiped away a generation of wealth for countless American families and put millions of Americans out of work. While the 2007-2008 financial crisis was in large part caused by an unprecedented number of defaults on subprime mortgages that should never have been awarded in the first place, reckless trading on Wall Street and risky bets placed by hedge funds wreaked havoc on our economy. Dodd-Frank was put in place because the financial crisis made it clear that just a few bad actors can hurt the economic well-being of millions of Americans, and I refuse to let us go back to a time when Wall Street can wreak havoc on Main Street. Now, I appreciate the opportunity to evaluate the role that clearinghouses have in protecting market participants against systemic risk and discussing how the recently passed Financial Choice Act would hurt the clearinghouse's ability to effectively manage risk. So my question is this. For the panel, I'm talking about the repeal of Title II and Title VII of Dodd-Frank, which was a provision of the Financial Choice Act passed on a pure party-line vote on June 8th. If this were to become law, what effect would the repeal of these two titles have on clearinghouses and the overall health and safety for swaps markets? And anyone can respond.
So let me jump in. Thank you very much. I think it's a very important question, and I think already addressed to some extent. But it's important to note that the framework absent Title II is bankruptcy and bankruptcy alone. So I don't think there's anyone on this panel who would not hope that these entities or any financial entity can go through bankruptcy, but in the context of a severe financial crisis, when normal sources of commercially available liquidity are frozen, there is no other opportunity other than Title II. It's also worth noting that Title VIII is the key to allowing for account services from the Federal Reserve, and the reason for that is that the Federal Reserve generically has not ever felt comfortable giving account services to entities that it did not have some sort of regulatory relationship with. So while it is theoretically possible to give account services to entities that are completely outside of the Federal Reserve's regulatory orbit, it would be completely unprecedented in the history of the United States. So the reason we have banking relationships between the Federal Reserve and banks all across this country is because banks are regulated by the Federal Reserve. Similarly, what Title VIII did was an arrangement where, in exchange for more cooperation between SEC, CFTC, and the Federal Reserve, there was also an arrangement for more security for cashes held by CCPs to be able to, at the Fed. That arrangement is consistent with the way we've regulated financial services, and it is an arrangement that would be broken if either of those titles were repealed.
So, and as a follow-up, if the Choice Act were to become law, the CFTC market regulator would likely become responsible for the resolution of a failed clearinghouse. We've heard testimony for the last 10 years, inculping this year, that the CFTC is understaffed and underfunded, and it seems unlikely that the agency will see an increase in funding or staffing anytime soon. My question is, does the market have confidence that they would be up to the task of resolving a failed clearinghouse?
Let me try that for a second. The problem is, as Mr. Garry said, in the absence of the appointment of a, either the FDIC or somebody else, the actual fallback is to bankruptcy under the Bankruptcy Code, and under the Bankruptcy Code, the only, the only option for clearinghouses is pure liquidation, not reorganization. So the CFTC wouldn't step in. If the CFTC somehow were, by law or otherwise, made If the CFTC somehow were, by law or otherwise, made the party responsible for dealing with the resolution of a clearinghouse, even though its budget didn't go up, I believe that by appointing an appropriate person as trustee and overseeing the process and getting the fees out of the process, that it could be done by the CFTC. But as I say, that isn't what the law is now, and it isn't the fallback position.
So you're saying what would likely happen then is a total liquidation under bankruptcy?
Unfortunately, I believe that is what the fallback is if Title II goes away. But there are other options out there and legislation floating around, I know people are talking about.
Thank you very much. I yield back.
General Lady, time expired. Dr. Marshall, five minutes.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I think I'll direct my first question to Mr. Hill and Mr. Dabs both is, well, on the other committees, on SST Committee, we talk a lot about cybersecurity. And if I was to prioritize my concerns, sitting on this side of it, as a more pressing danger concern at cybersecurity, and maybe, Ms. Hill, you could talk a little bit about ICE is doing to get a handle on some of those.
Yeah, I suspect what I'll say will be very similar to the CME and others. Cybersecurity is at the top of our agenda. Effectively, we operate exchanges and clearinghouses, but we fundamentally run technology. And so our ability to have those markets run, our clearinghouses to operate, our exchanges to facilitate risk management, all depends on our technology being up and running. We have developed significant disaster recovery and business continuity plans that have been reviewed with our members, have been reviewed with our regulators, that are reviewed by our independent boards of regulators, and have made significant investments in our information security in terms of resources and in terms of not just trying to keep the bad guys out, but more importantly, you assume the bad guys are in, and can you find them and can you stop them? So this is an area where I would suggest to you, over the last three years, there's not been a heavier place of investment for our company or a topic that's had more senior management and, frankly, board-level attention at our company.
Mr. Dabs, anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, I would kind of echo some of the things that Scott said. I would say that, first and foremost, I am not an expert on cybersecurity within my institution. As an institution of 45,000 people, we have teams of people that do this as their day-to-day job. So in terms of expertise, I can follow up and give you some greater detail of what we've been doing, but just from a user perspective and how I see it, you know, we have BCP plans, we have employee training where we will go through not only video and instructional training, but also, you know, we'll send spoofing emails and things like that that will try to catch people that you shouldn't click this, and whoever clicks it gets an email saying, hey, you shouldn't have done that. So we'll do things like spoofing emails, we'll do tire-kicking, we look at things like two-factor authentication. So I engage in it, and I'm aware of it, but I'm certainly not the expert on the subject for my institution.
Okay.
If I may, one of the responsibilities that I had when I was at the Treasury Department was to oversee the Treasury's relationships with the financial industry on cybersecurity. And as part of that, the centerpiece of our efforts were a series of tabletop exercises where we brought together law enforcement, Homeland Security, intelligence community, industry, and regulators to explore scenarios where a cyber incident would create business impact. And as part of that, we had members of the CME, ICE, and other clearinghouses participate fully. I think the bad news in those scenarios was that the uncertainty associated with cyber means it may well be our singer-most-important risk in this or any other context. The scale of the resources, whilst very significant, still pales in comparison to the scale of the potential threats. Secondly, I think the good news in this is that when we went through these exercises, the reaction and the spirit of cooperation among all parties, the spirit of alignment, was notable and notably different than what happens when people are in a creditor relationship. So I think there's much to be learned, but also very significant cooperation that's undergoing even today across government and with industry.
Okay. Last question is, in 1987, I was in medical school. I didn't even know there was a crisis. So maybe, Mr. Solzman, Mr. Stager, well, lessons learned, what happened then that doesn't happen today? Man, I got a minute left, so each of you get 30 seconds at it.
Okay. Well, in 1987, when the crisis hit, fortunately, a bunch of CME people were actually at a meeting that night. And I almost would have needed the services of a doctor because I thought my heart was going to stop. We found that the interconnections between the stock exchange, the commodities exchanges, and the banks were nonexistent. It was the closest thing to essentially blowing up that event into a major disaster. The banks didn't know what their obligation should be to create liquidity. The stock exchange and the futures exchange were at the beginning of a fight as to who was to blame, with the stock exchange trying to blame the futures exchange. Finally, the Federal Reserve stepped in and told the banks to provide liquidity, and they would backstop them. And the next morning, the Chicago Mercantile Exchange, I forget at what time, but at some time in the morning, the Chicago Board of Trade, the Dow Jones Contract started moving up, and that put a stop to the crisis, and we all healed. And then we had three years of reports afterwards, as you know, to look back and try and learn something from it. And the things we learned was, you better have hotlines, you better be prepared, you better have everybody interconnected and stopping and starting at the right time. So we did learn, and we're still learning.
My time's expired, sorry.
Chairman, time expired. Mr. Halloran. Tom, I cannot get your left.
We'll get that there, Chairman.
Keep working, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess 1987 is where I'll begin, because I was on the Board of Directors of the Chicago Board of Trade at the time. The word liquidity was something that I'll never forget. And when we're talking about these issues, the complexity of these issues, if we're talking about protecting the American public, we have to understand that if our economy goes awry, we are still, 10 years later, suffering as an economy from what occurred in '07 and '08. And so what occurred back in '87 was exactly as it was explained, but the concerns continued on and on. And yes, communication was bad, it's better today. But it still gets down to this cascading impact that occurs within the marketplace. And one of the things that's not realized a lot, we talk a lot about the crisis and the cascading impact, is how to stop it from occurring in the first place. And that's where clearinghouses come in. Their ability to change margin requirements, their ability to liquidate positions, their ability to seek markets that are cornered, their ability to understand the marketplace. But they require that type of liquidity that only, I believe, the Federal Reserve can produce. You know, the guaranteed fund, the position requirements, all of that can only get us to a certain point, but each and every one of those segments protects the economic economy of America. So it's part of a whole process that without it, that's what we saw in '07 and '08. There was none of that available to us for the most part. And we had that cascading impact that just tore us apart as an economy, and luckily, the decision was made for the Federal Reserve to step in. Because if it hadn't, those banks that we tried to get a hold of in 1987 in October and other exchanges tried to get a hold of, I think at that time, our clearinghouses were combined, or not. It was a little bit after that, yeah. But, you know, there was limited ability, and now we're much more communicating on an international basis, which adds another level of complexity. We had markets that were international at the time and trading internationally, but the complexity today is so much different. I just can't envision a marketplace in which we have to identify that the Federal Reserve is not the backstop for this whole process. And so I guess with that, if we're really going to protect the taxpayers of our nation, the economy has to be the number-one protection, not just worrying about the risk on the Federal Reserve's side of the equation. We have really smart, competent people that will address that risk, but our overall objective needs to be, how do we protect the American people? With that, I'll ask for anybody to comment, how much better off are we today than we were in 2007 and 2008, as far as creating that protection?
So I appreciate the question, and I'll start and be quick, John, so you can jump in. So I think a great example is the credit default swapper, or CDS, market. So back in '07 and '08, I like Mr. Garrity's phrase, I wrote it down, you know, a complex web of transactions. That's what you had, and they were bilateral trades. It was undetermined who was exposed to whom. You didn't have the benefit of netting. You didn't know what margins had been required, if any, and based on what the individual firms knew, but collectively, nobody had insight into exactly what the exposures are. Cycle ahead, a decade later, and more than 80% of the CDS index market is now cleared. Around half of the CDS single-name market is cleared. And on any given day, we know what the net exposures are, we know exactly how much collateral is held against those positions, and that collateral is held based upon an ability to liquidate the positions over a five-day period, representing the relative ill-liquidity of the CDS market. So you have transparency in the market today, you have certainty of collateral in the market today, you have...
I only have four seconds, so I'm going to ask one. Does anybody identify that lack of liquidity would help this process? No, thank you.
Chairman, time's your back. Mr. Bacon, General Bacon.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it. As a 30-year Air Force guy, your testimony is informational for me, so I appreciate it. And my first question is to Mr. Dabs, how might a clearinghouse failure occur? We touched on this a little bit, maybe in the testimony, but is it more likely to be a gradual or just a shock or a surprise?
I think it's going to be a relatively shocking event. It's not going to be a gradual demise, it's going to be a kind of cliff event. And to, you know, to the point that we were just talking about on, you know, how is the system safer, how does this happen? I think post-2008, we've ratcheted up all of the reforms. So we've had money market reform, we've increased bank capital, we've taken leverage out of the system. So all of the components of the ecosystem have gotten safer. I don't think anybody can tell you how safe because we haven't gone through the next crisis, right? But we all know that every component of the market infrastructure has gotten safer. So when I think about, you know, how do we get to this point of a failure, the failure, again, has to happen where a major banking institution, at least one of them, again, I know that you're covered for four and you're covered for two, but again, it depends on how bad the world is, a major banking institution has to default, and that's your start of the scenario. And so...
That'll be your first indication?
Yes, that's when you know. And I think that, in our minds, that what we would call that is, that's your stress event, right? And then, you know, do we get to, do we just stay in stress zone, or do we get to a recovery zone, or do we get to a resolution zone? But I think our goal that all of us have kind of focused on is the resiliency, and that's how do we respond when we hit that stress moment? How do we respond, and what tools and what infrastructure have we built for readiness for that stress moment? Because that, to me, is the real time when all of this matters.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Solzman and Mr. Dabs both, for this next question. When should a regulator step in and trigger its resolution powers?
Well, I mean, many people believe, and Mr. Garrity believes, that Title II is the authority to the FDIC, and I agree with that with respect to certain clearinghouses, but there's actually definitions in there that raise a question as to whether that applies to every clearinghouse under all circumstances. Right now, my guess is, whatever the law is, the FDIC would be the one who would step in, and nobody would really have, despite my legal background and technicalities, I don't know that anybody could really stop them once they did step in. The real point here is the timing of when they should step in. Remember, we've all spent two and a half to three years creating plans to deal with, how do we avoid getting to resolution? How do we have resilience so that when one bank fails, nothing really happens? We employ a bunch of the stuff, everybody opens the next day, everything's good. Two or three banks fail, we start using these pools of money, we can still open the next day, everything's still good. What happens past then? Well, we've been required by our regulators and by European regulators to have ways to distribute losses and still keep working. The question is, is a federal regulator, is the FDIC, going to step in and do something else that differs from the plan that everybody else has accepted and that's been worked through in the industry? We think that's a bad idea. We don't know what's going to happen, nobody knows what's going to happen.
Yeah, I guess my view on this would be, you know, there's a few things. Number one, from a resolution perspective, it's my opinion that whatever the resolution authority is, when they step in, all they're going to be doing is distributing funds. You're just, there's no high-functioning moment at that point, right? It's who's at the table at stress and recovery that I think is the key. I think the actual resolution process is now, the clearinghouse is defunct, and now it's just distributing whatever funds are left over. And so in my opinion, the CFTC, for the two CCPs up here, or more broadly, you could follow the designated regulator under Title VIII of all the relevant CCPs, but for up here, I would say the two CCPs, the CFTC is the expert of their functioning domain. And then I think you want the Fed at the seat, at the table, just because if you want to take any extraordinary actions, the Fed has the most credibility to take extraordinary actions, given we don't know what the problem is, where it's coming from, we can't predict what that is. So I think you want the Fed there just to be able to take action if there are extraordinary measures that they could do at the time that were appropriate.
Thank you to all five for sharing our expertise. And, Mr. Chairman, thanks for the time. I yield back.
Gentleman yields back. The Chair recognizes a gentle lady from Delaware for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the panel. I first want to also thank Mr. Solzman for going off-script. It was very helpful what you shared, and I heard so much today. I come from Delaware, so you know financial services is important to my state, but I heard a lot about mitigation and management of risk, about interconnectedness and resiliency, safety and solvency. And my question initially was going to be about, really about the safety of the market, but Mr. Dabs basically started to run through some of the answers there as well, the swaps market. So I'm going to ask more of a general question for the whole panel. Are there other big-picture changes to the regulation of clearinghouses post-Dodd-Frank that we in Congress should be watching out for?
And I applaud you for going off-script as well. So I would point out, in my testimony, I also mentioned it, but one of the mechanisms that currently is unavailable that would enhance the system at a time of stress is for a client of a defaulted clearing member. So that is the time when we've described as a stress event, where a clearing member has defaulted. Their clients immediately stop paying because nobody's going to pay to a bankrupt entity or a defaulted entity. And so what that does is, you then have a regulator come in, and you also have a trustee come in, and they can't tell the difference between a good client, which is, they have the finances available to pay, they just won't pay it because it's defaulted, and a bad client, who is actually insolvent as well. So when a regulator comes in, they can't tell the difference, and immediately, you want to decipher between, where are my problem areas within that defaulted clearing member, and where are my areas that are fine and just need to be ported out to a new member? So establishing a mechanism, that's a very temporary mechanism, that allows an end-user to make payments to a clearinghouse during the default of their member would not only make the system easier for the regulators and the trustee to manage, but it would also increase the liquidity at which the clearinghouse requires during that time. So instead of the clearinghouse needing to go source that liquidity because those clients have stopped paying, those clients would be able to continue to pay and receive, and so you would decrease the size of the problem and provide more transparency. So in my opinion, that would be a very simple, in the sense that, you know, nobody's going to argue with it in the ecosystem, but it still needs to find an avenue between bankruptcy code and the Commodity Exchange Act where that could actually work and function.
We've been working with Mr. Dabs for three years to find this type of solution, and we're in the process, but unfortunately, at this point, it's only going to work for very large clients, not for smaller clients, I don't think, because you have to have everything... prearranged, and it's expensive.
Yeah, just, this is slightly different. So this is a new one.
Again, but the fact is, in order for there to be proper banking relationships so these cash flows can work the next day, you have to have a lot of stuff prearranged, including a prearranged place to go to another clearinghouse. And we do that for swaps to a certain extent. To futures, it's been more difficult, and there's problems with the bankruptcy code. And we're happy to have technical meetings with your staff, who, by the way, I want to compliment the staff. The preparation for this hearing is about as good as I've ever seen. Really great, so.
And my second question, Mr. Garrity. Last year, the CFTC conducted stress tests of the clearinghouses. What were some of the key lessons of those tests, and how could those tests be improved?
So, thank you for that question. I think it's very important, obviously. As a, not a staff member of the CFTC, I can't speak to all of the lessons learned, but I think as Mr. Hill mentioned earlier, the general set of stresses found that the existing resources across the CCP landscape were sufficient. I think the places where additional work probably should be done and needs to be done is on the interaction effects. Because of the concentration of derivatives markets, if a large clearing member fails at one, they're also very, very likely to be members of other CCPs. So there's a coordination element to that, which is just the simple communication and collaboration of knowing who will communicate what to whom and at what time. That's a very important part that could be and is already being worked into stress tests. And then there are also liquidity elements, and Governor Jay Powell talked about that earlier, to make sure that the liquidity flows in the system as a whole would be sufficient and, and prearranged. So I think those are two areas. I think the stress tests themselves were successful, but the collaboration between multiple sets of CCPs and multiple clearing members is where, a place where more work can and is already being done.
My time has expired. Thank you.
Mr. Dunn, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me start by saying I certainly have enjoyed the opportunity to, to listen to five such learned financial leaders. And, and I think it's important for us to understand the mechanisms of the clearinghouses and the processes by which they might fail. A great deal of fun for me, but I'm going to, I'm going to change, I'm going to ask you a question that Joe Citizen on the street might ask. So I want something that is maybe a little more visceral and palpable to the, to our constituents back home. So the default, your clearinghouses are full of Treasury bills, and I think that's, those assets are central to mitigating the risks that you manage. In the past, we talk about here in Congress and has said about us, that we're talking about raising the debt ceiling, and maybe we won't, maybe we'll fail to pay all or part of the United States obligations. No big deal if we, I don't think we're going to do this, by the way. But the argument is made that, that this will somehow affect, we actually will perhaps default on our interest. And what I want to know is, how do the clearinghouses respond? How would you value US debt? How would you respond? And I'll start with Mr. Salzman, if I may.
Well, right now, clearinghouses that take Treasuries and other kinds of collateral, revalue them each night. So if there were some fear that interest rate, interest might not be paid, and the value of Treasuries went down, the clearinghouses would automatically revalue all the collateral they're holding. Some collateral might, would go up in value, some would go down.
You're chasing the market on the--
And we would require, we would require our clearing members to come up with additional collateral if the value of their collateral went down. In addition, at the same time the collateral's going down in value, obviously, the value of contracts is changing. And so to the extent that there's losses on these contracts, those people who had bigger losses than were expected would be required to pay, and of course, we'd then pay over the money to the people who--
Do you ever reprice intra-day, or just once--
We, for futures, we price intra-day. For swaps, we price once daily. So futures, we price about 1 o'clock.
So how does that affect the value, or what does that, in your clearinghouse, you're going to stay solvent, no matter--
We stay--
I mean, if we do something terribly stupid up here, will you stay solvent?
We will stay solvent as long as you don't bring down the banking system and bring down the bank. Which I'm sure, look, no, you're not going to do that, please.
No, I know we're not, we're not. But I mean, you mean, these are the questions that you hear. And I really, I really wanted something, you know, to come out here that we're, you know, the citizenry could understand--
From, from your point of view--
--the derivatives market.
We're prepared for changes wrought in the market by ordinary, even extraordinary uncertainty. That's all built into the system, 100 years of work. It all gets done automatically, and the next morning, the books are clean.
So, Mr. Garrity, you seem to be the pessimist in the group here. Can, would you opine on that?
Yeah. I think it is difficult to overstate the severity of the shock if the US government failed to pay its interest or its obligations of any sort. Can you imagine a scenario in which the US Congress made a decision and asked the Treasury to pay foreign investors who held US Treasuries instead of Social Security beneficiaries? I simply cannot imagine that scenario. And because of that, I think that the question of the debt ceiling, it is impossible to overstate the severity of the shock, both to US citizens and the world financial system. The US credit is the single safest asset that we understand in the United, in the globe. So it would cause an immediate repricing of all financial securities worldwide. And I'm not sure that anyone at this table or in the world is prepared for the severity of that shock.
That's an excellent answer. Would you answer that, Mr. Sagwell?
Same question about the, we, if Congress loses its mind, we default on some portion of the US debt.
Well, I'm mindful that it's an awfully delicate issue to address issues involving the operation of the US Treasury as, as a staff member of the Federal Reserve. So I don't want to go beyond--
I can give you a hall pass since we're short on time. Why don't we ask Mr. Hill instead? You're up, Mr. Hill. Same question, we've defaulted up here.
Okay, so I, I agree with what Mr. Salzman said. I, we, number one, we do hold US Treasuries as collateral, but we also hold a significant amount of cash. And so assuming it was a temporary loss of mine and things resolved itself, I think it would be fine. I'll, I'll tell you our experience in running up to, and I'll be interested if CMEs was different, in running up to the prior is, we actually saw the value of US Treasuries longer dated go up, not down, as we approached the debt ceiling. And so though we stopped taking some of the very short-dated Treasuries, the value of the Treasuries we held longer out the curve actually went up.
Last half-full, kind of guy. Thank you very, very much for those answers. I thought they might be more interesting, honestly, to the folks--
Jim, it's time has expired.
Are you?
Ms. Blaskett, five minutes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you, gentlemen, for being here this morning. This is all very fascinating. Of course, my head is just now kind of full with numbers and processes. But it's important that we understand how this works, and it's really integral to how our, how our money stays safe. And so I wanted to ask a couple of questions that were related to some of the testimony that you've given already. Mr. Stolzmann, in your testimony, you went through this series of precautions to be taken in the case of a defaulting member, and that was the waterfall discussion that you gave us. First, the collection of initial margin, the default fund contributions, the clearinghouse would put it in its own capital, its own contribution to the waterfall, then if necessary, non-defaulting member contributions would be involved. And if that were still not sufficient, you would go to an assessment of your members. Now, have you ever gone to the place where you have to go beyond the depaulter's contribution?
No.
That has never happened? And if not, what do you feel that says about the resilience of the clearinghouse? What does that mean?
Well, you don't want to make too much, because obviously, we're planning for worse. We've seen a lot of things, but nobody can guarantee that 1987 is the worst we've ever, we're ever going to see, or that there couldn't be some combination of things. So we think we're very good. We think we've learned a lot. But we know, we aren't all-knowing. You know, there is only one that's all-knowing. And so we need--
That's your mother.
We need to prepare.
All-knowing is your mother. I didn't know you were thinking God, but--
At my age, I know. Yes. So we're prepared for much worse than we've seen, much worse than we've seen.
Okay, thank you. And I know this was discussed in some measure by my colleague, Ms. Custer, with you, Mr. Garrity, but I wanted to ask Mr. Stegerwald, Steigerwald?
Yes.
Yes. That same issue with regard to the sufficiency of, to cover losses that result from default. We know that you ultimately may have to take, step into, manage a resolution under the orderly liquidation authority that's under Dodd-Frank. However, just recently in the House, the Financial Choice Act rolled back some of Dodd-Frank, and would repeal in that, that bill, the Choice, the Financial Choice Act, would repeal some of that authority in addition to the authority of the Financial Stability Oversight Council, the EFSOC, to designate non-bank financial institutions for heightened supervision by the Fed. If that's adopted, what are your thoughts on the effects this would have on clearinghouse resiliency should a crisis occur?
Thank you. That's, that's quite an important and complicated question.
That's how I like to do it.
Let me address first the resolution aspects of the issue.
Great.
I must say, as I indicated in my opening statement, that we should be mindful of the extraordinary default management and recovery authorities that central counterparties have. I would distinguish central counterparty clearinghouses from other kinds of financial companies that might be eligible for resolution under Title II.
Okay.
Speaking strictly with respect to CCPs, I frankly see almost no need for resolution whatsoever. My view about resolution is that we need to have effective measures and appropriate incentives to make recovery work. Bear in mind that the issue in a clearinghouse is not only the allocation of losses, as it is in an ordinary bankruptcy, but it is critically the effort to reestablish a matchbook to serve the ongoing interests, the continuity of those positions for clearing members. That's the whole raison d'etre of the clearinghouse. It serves as a commitment mechanism to preserve the value of open positions struck at market prices in voluntary transactions.
And you feel you have the mechanisms in place now to do that?
The clearinghouses, in my opinion, have various mechanisms that will ensure, or best assure, the coordination and cooperation with clearing members to preserve value. It's in their interest, as well as the CCP's interest, to preserve that value. We should not get so fixated on money losses, though they may be large in an extreme market circumstance. We have to remember the value of the matchbook.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr.--
Jim, it's time has expired. Mr. Thompson, five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Steigerwald, numerous scholars have written that Title VIII of Dodd-Frank creates moral hazards for clearing participants by promising government support to a failing clearinghouse. That generally, they generally argue that account services imply a possible bailout of insolvent clearinghouses by the Federal Reserve, which might cause clearinghouses and, and their members to be more risky. Despite your ultimate support for the Federal Reserve accounts, do you share these concerns? Why or why not?
I do not. In fact, I think it's incumbent upon us to understand the critical distinction between solvency and illiquidity. This is an age-old problem. Of course, it goes back to Walter Badgett and his original prescriptions for the lender of last resort function. I would say, by comparison to banks, it's even simpler to determine that a CCP is solvent while it is undertaking default management and recovery efforts. The extraordinary powers I refer to, that CCPs have embedded in their rules, to liquidate a depaulter's positions or conduct an auction so that those positions can be assumed by other clearing members, or to tear up the positions if it turns out that it's impossible to reestablish a matchbook. Those measures, I believe, are sufficient to restore the clearinghouse to a proper, matched operating basis. And we should not regard that as a problem of solvency. We should merely assure that private sector sources of liquidity are operating, or if not, that the Federal Reserve has the opportunity to provide temporary, secured liquidity to sustain the recovery efforts of the clearinghouse.
Thank you. Mr. Dabs, if the, if the market has lost confidence in a clearinghouse, swap participants may stop transacting simply to avoid being forced to make the clearinghouse their, their counterparty. How can the market continue to function while a clearinghouse is failing? And should the resolution authority be empowered to suspend the clearing mandate temporarily?
So I, the, it's a very problematic situation because, A, when you have concern about the safety of a clearinghouse, what you really have is you have concern about its clearing members. That's, that's almost every example. There are non-defaulting losses, but your general concern that, that we're all playing towards is that a clearing member has, has a problem. So your willingness to transact on a bilateral basis with counterparties is also going to be decreased because you're, in these stress situations, if we go back to Lehman, you have concerns about who's the good bank and who's the bad bank? Who's the next guy to fail? And so that's, that's problem number one. So I don't see necessarily going back to the bilateral market as being a good liquidity function. But secondly, we have, we have had such a large migration from uncleared markets to cleared markets that if I look out 10 years from now, the size of those uncleared markets are going to be significantly smaller. They're getting smaller by the day, and they're, and they're going to continue to get smaller. So the ecosystem and the ability for those markets to actually function 10 years from now is, is greatly reduced. We simply will not have the infrastructure from a legal perspective, from a documentation perspective, and from a, a, a technology and operational equipment perspective to be able to fall back on a bilateral market in 10 years, five years.
Thank you. I'm going to ask this just briefly to the panel, since I think we'll have some different views. What powers should regulators have when dealing with a failing clearinghouse?
The regulators currently have emergency power to step in and take, you know, a wide range of actions. But what they've done, which is the good thing, is that they've acted in advance before there's any failure. And they've caused us to spend two, two and a half years drafting plans which have preset steps that we will take under certain circumstances. So instead of trying to get a commission together, make a determination that there's an emergency, and then decide what to act, we have it already on paper, and the commission can just say to us, fellas, this is your plan. You agreed to this. Your clearing members know what it is. Everybody knows what it is. It's in your rules. You better carry it out as it's been established. So that's been the solution. I think it's the right solution.
Thank you. Jim, it's time has expired. Ms. Lawson, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome to the committee. Probably two weeks ago, there was a considerable amount, and I understand you don't want to get into political aspect of it, but a considerable amount of concern coming from the banking community about overturning Dodd-Frank. And I think, Mr. Garrity, I understood your comments earlier. You said that Dodd-Frank was not implemented to prevent another financial crisis, but to mitigate the impact of another financial crisis that we might have on our economy. So please astride the road a clearinghouse may have and happen to mitigate the impact of another financial crisis.
Thank you. I think that's a very important point that you make, Representative Lawson, that while it is all of our intentions and hopes that financial crises are prevented, I think if we look across the scope of history, we know that we also need very strong tools to mitigate, because there's no possibility of no financial crisis as we look into the stretch of the future. At the same time, I think that central counterparties play a really critical role in the transformation from a very large and poorly documented bilateral arrangements with poor credit arrangements and worse liquidity arrangements, moving to a central counterparty world. They can act as very significant buffers in terms of making sure that the losses from one are pre-funded, so that the depaulter pays rather than immediately transmitting losses across to other parts of the financial system. And just as importantly, they can act as beacons of transparency and predictabul, predictability-- And just as importantly, they can act as beacons of transparency and predictability, as members of this committee have said, because in the crisis, it is that panic and uncertainty, even more than the losses, that can generate such terrible outcomes.
Okay, and anyone can answer this because I'm trying to understand it. The big banks and the commercial banks all seem to be on the same page about the amount of paperwork and everything that is caused by Dodd-Frank. Is that a legitimate concern? Or is it, is it overburdened? Is Dodd-Frank, is overburdened, these institutions? What is calling them to come together because normally on a different spectrum?
If I, if I understand the question correctly, the question is the burdensome nature of Dodd-Frank. And if I look at, you know, institutions, peer institutions, our institutions, I think everybody has a team, and I should actually call it an army, of people over the last eight years, seven years, that have implemented the Dodd-Frank standards and now continue to operate under those standards. And so I think that whether it's measured in paperwork or process, I think that there is a level in here where we might have gone too far on certain things that are not necessarily beneficial to the actual ecosystem. So I think, as I mentioned earlier, we've kind of ratcheted everything up, whether it be money market reform for asset managers, we've taken leverage out, we've done lots of things to the system in all different spheres of the ecosystem. And now I think, now that we're kind of starting to get to the completion of implementation, everybody looks back and says, "Okay, well, did we really need this and this? Or are we solving the same problem twice and therefore adding extra burden onto the system?" And so I think that the goal is to find things that are not necessarily going to harm the taxpayer or the economy, but yet make the system more efficient because we've increased the inefficiencies in the systems by just simply complying with Dodd-Frank.
Okay, and this will probably be a quick one because I'm running out of time. So the concerns of the financial institutions about all of the issues that they have to go to is illegitimate, if I understand the latter part of your statement?
Yes.
Okay. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
Jim, you're back. Mr. Allen, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to expand on the banking situation a little bit, from your standpoint in the clearinghouse, Mr. Salzman, exclusively, in other words, we've got the large national, almost international banks, and then we have our regional banks that may be across one or two states, and then we have our community banks, which are all important to the, as stated, the ecosystem of our financial markets. The folks that are getting killed right now are the community banks because the larger institutions are able to deal with the compliance issues because they are, you know, they have the expertise, and they have to keep that ongoing expertise because of their business model. Who does a clearinghouse typically do business with? Is it just large banks, or is it the regional banks, or even community banks?
It's the large banks.
So it's the large banks?
Yeah, I mean, the smaller banks come to us through the larger banks indirectly.
In participations or something?
No, not so much in participations, but doing their own business, their own hedging through the bigger banks, not directly. So we do not face them.
Okay. So largely, under the Dodd-Frank legislation, Choice Act that we passed, basically it deals with banks that are community banks, banks that, you know, have a fairly conservative business model. And did that Choice Act affect your relationship as far as the big banks were concerned?
No, not with the big banks. And what you're doing for the small banks, I, as I say, I'm trying to stay out of politics, so--
You can't stay out of politics. Would anyone, anybody want to take on that question?
So I think it's worth highlighting, so I, when I was the Assistant Secretary for Financial Institutions at Treasury, I spent, you know, dozens and dozens of hours a year with hundreds of community bankers. That was a significant part of my role. I think that the, it's important to make distinctions even within the community banking space in terms of the resources and the size of the institution that we're talking about. If you take a community bank with $100 million in assets, the right way to think about that community bank is as a small business. They'll often have $1 million or less than $1 million in net earnings over the course of a year. When you get to about the $10 billion frame, you're talking about quite large enterprises that might have, on average, about $100 million in profit earned each year. So even within the community bank, I think, community bank space, it's important to keep our focus on what are the reforms doing and what can be done to simplify the world for the smallest of the community banks. Those community banks also tend to serve the areas that are more rural and lower income as a general matter.
Exactly.
I think as it relates to clearinghouses more generally, any community bank, for whatever size, has interest rate risk. That interest rate risk ultimately finds its place in global financial markets. And so when community banks are managing that risk, they do rely on the strength and stability of the central counterparties.
And that's why I was asking about your impact on those community banks because, you know, they loan to small business, and their risk model is totally different. It's built on relationships, and small businesses create 70% of all new job growth, and that's what we've got to do, is create jobs in the country. And I just wanted to see kind of how you played out in those risks. Question for anyone on the panel, the federal government is guaranteeing a lot of debt out there. I mean, you've got the mortgage industry depends on Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, your industry. I mean, lots of people are depending on the federal government to back the debt. Any of you have any idea what percentage of all debt is backed by the federal government, and is that a danger to the whole system? I mean, I've heard numbers as far as like 60% of all consumer business and debt is backed by this federal government. Does anybody have the answer to that question?
So I think the, well, I don't have a precise answer to the question. I think the, one simple way to think about that question is think about the size of large debt markets. So the global treasury market is about $10 trillion. The global mortgage market is about $10 trillion. So if you just take, in very rough numbers, those are obviously not precise numbers, you can take, if you look at the size of aggregate debt markets, the two largest debt markets in the world are U.S. mortgages and U.S. Treasuries. And those are obviously, at this point, guaranteed.
Right.
I think when you look into consumer credit outside of mortgage, you find very little, and similarly in the small business space, out of the SBA, outside of the SBA, which is obviously a different arrangement.
And the concern there, and I know I'm out of time, is that, you know, when one goes out, it sounds like a domino effect, and that's a very big concern, getting back to Mr. Dunn's question. I yield.
Jim, how much time has expired? Ms. Soto, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a different concern about our cybersecurity of our clearinghouses. It'd be great to hear from Mr. Dabs, Mr. Hill, or any other member of the panel who wants to comment on how well-protected are these clearinghouses from cyber attacks?
Thank you for the question, and I'll acknowledge, as Mr. Dabs did earlier, I am not a cybersecurity expert, but we spend, I noted earlier, that the number-one topic that we have spent time and resources on over the last three years has been cybersecurity. Fundamentally, we operate exchanges and clearinghouses that depend on technology, and our customers depend on that technology being up and available. We move billions of dollars every day across that technology. There couldn't be a more important topic. Examples that, again, Mr. Dabs noted earlier, we do similar things where we do employee education, we do phishing tests on our employees. We invest a significant amount in ensuring that we can detect intrusions, prevent them, of course, is the first goal, but then to detect the intrusions. We run red and blue teams where we've got one of our own teams that we have attack our exchange. We pay third-party firms to attack our exchange, all in order to learn lessons and build better defenses. So there's not a more important topic at our senior management and board level. Be happy to introduce you to our Head of Information Security, who could give you far more details than I can, but I assure you, it is topic number one on our agenda.
Are there generally multiple locations that you all store data sort of as a redundancy network? I know they do that with the stock market already currently.
Yeah, it's not just storing data. We essentially have to have a second facility that's more than 400 miles from our first facility that can be brought up in under two hours now.
Two hours.
And so we run that test regularly. Even in our first facility, the redundancies in terms of the different electrical systems coming in, plus they have a set of backup generators, they have six of them that look like the biggest jet engines you've ever seen. I don't know if anybody's been there, but they test them once a month. I was there when they did. And when they test them, they blow the walls off the building, and they fire up these generators, and they have 50,000 gallons of diesel to run in case two different electrical sources go down. So not only do they have strength at the original facility, but they have a separate facility. Everything is tested. So that's not the problem. The real problem are cyber intrusions, which is something that we're working on every day, and I must say, the CFTC has required our board at the board level, not just the management level, but the board level, to bring in outside experts and to have prepared remarks and discussions at board meetings all the time.
Has there been any recent, over the last five to 10 years, successful cyber attacks on any of our clearinghouses?
It just depends on what you mean by successful. There are literally hundreds of attempts to get into every financial system in this country every day. Hundreds is an understatement.
I guess successful, I would define as an interruption in--
No, not for us, nothing like that.
Thank you. I yield back.
Jim, you're back. Well, Jim, thank you very much for being here this morning and testifying for us. We certainly appreciate that. Just a couple of nits and nats. On a clearinghouse, is there, in fact, a bright line between illiquidity and insolvency? Ms. Salzman.
In the broader context, that's always a very tricky--
Because at the heat of the fight, when it's at the speed of light, haven't, can regulators tell the difference?
I think in the context of central counterparty clearinghouses, it is simpler to make that distinction than in general banking organizations. The matchbook that the clearinghouse operates is crystal clear. It needs to intermediate all of the sellers and all of the buyers. That's very easy to see. When a defaulter, when a default occurs, it destroys a part of that match, and the clearinghouse's immediate exercise is to restore that match. The regulators, the CCP itself and its clearing members, frankly, don't have to engage in the kind of speculative valuation of capital assets in order to determine whether the clearinghouse is viable.
So while the clearinghouse is still functioning, even though it's got a major clearing member who's defaulted, which I assume triggered this issue, they're able to keep matching that up. But getting back to Mr. Dabs' comments about shifting your customers of that customer, being able to go directly to the clearinghouse or whatever, all that analysis and everything, someone else stepping in to that point in time and deciding, is this illiquid or is this insolvent? Should, it can't be particularly crystal clear, can it?
Well, again, all of these issues are terribly complicated.
Sure.
No doubt about that. But again, I think it's relatively clear. The clearinghouse either liquidates in open markets the defaulter's position or conducts an auction so that those positions can be assumed. There's a very regular process for making that happen, and if, for some reason, those processes do not restore a matchbook, the clearinghouse has tear-up authority, which would, in effect, restore the clearinghouse to a match.
And just to make a quick point, I think that one of the major differences between a CCP and a banking institution is it's much easier to identify the assets and liabilities of a CCP relative to the banking organization. The banking organization just has so many--
But still, even a CCP has assets related to customers that you talked--
Exactly. So they're segregated all the time, so you know what your assets are here, what shape of liquidity, but you know how much they're worth here. And then you have your liabilities, which is what are the clearing members' obligations that aren't being paid. So it's just, the math is easier just because there aren't as many moving components of things that get revalued.
Unrelated, I think, Mr. Hill, you mentioned that the Fed pays above-market rates on their deposits. Back in the dark ages, when I was in banking, we would only pay higher interest rates if we needed deposits. Is the, does the Fed need deposits? Is that why they're paying higher interest rates? Is there a stated reason why that's the case?
I can't speak to Fed policy. I'll revert to what I said, though, that it's, for us, it's not about the return, it's about the security.
Right.
And so I don't know the policy aspects of that decision.
Okay. One of the things I hope is clear today is that we've established relatively limited risk to the taxpayers of the country to allow all clearinghouses access to Fed account services and in very narrow, specific transactions, access to the Fed window. And so hopefully that came clear with the testimony. Again, thank you very much for being here this morning. Under the rules of committee, to the record of today's hearing, we remain open for 10 calendar days to receive additional material and supplemental written responses from the witnesses to any question posed by a member. The hearing of the community agriculture adjourned. Thank you all.